Good evening. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is April 10, 2019. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
Do we have a second?
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. We are in full complement with the exception of Commissioner Graham, who was unable to make it tonight and sends his regret. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session following the workshop meeting held on Monday, April 8th, to discuss one matter of litigation and one personnel matter. At this point, we'll move on to Resolution Number 1473. Mr. Ed Siriani, retired Director of Operations of the Springfield Township Public Works Department, please come on down to the microphone. And Commissioner Shum has a resolution to read.
So I'd like to read Resolution 1473, a resolution honoring a career of service to Springfield Township, Montgomery County, by Edward R. Siriani. Whereas Edward R. Siriani, a lifelong resident of Springfield Township, graduated from Springfield High School in 1975. Whereas on September 30th, 1976, Ed joined the Springfield Township Public Works Department initially as a refuse laborer. In 1978, Ed was transferred to the Highway Division. And whereas, once in the Highway Division, his hard work, demonstration of specialized skills, and acceptance of responsibility provided for an expedited elevation from laborer to driver, equipment operator, and general mechanic. And whereas, when the township needed a knowledgeable, talented representative to take on a newly-created position of municipal project inspector to oversee all municipal infrastructure projects, private development construction improvements, and community development block grant projects, Mr. Siriani willingly took on the assignment in September 1986. And whereas, in June 2002, after years of demonstrating his technical skills and special knack of inspiring his coworkers to follow his lead in addressing the difficult and sometimes dangerous requirements of the Public Works Department, Mr. Siriani was promoted to management of the department initially as a foreman, and later in January 2013, as director of operations. And whereas, whether Ed was assisting in the management or response to an emergency condition within the township, preparing a facility for community celebration, or supporting a volunteer athletic association with their endeavors, he did so fully, without hesitation, without recognition. And whereas, Mr. Siriani was required to be absent from his wife Ruth, son Ed, daughters Amy and Nicole on many nights, weekends, and holidays in order to serve Springfield Township. Now therefore, be resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize, commend, and wholeheartedly thank Edward R. Siriani for over 42 years of dedicated service to the Springfield Township community, and also extends best wishes to Ed and his family in the future.
Wait, 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 wait. Now we'll vote? We're gonna stop? We've gotten honest on this. So, did you just make a motion to that effect?
To adopt Resolution 1473.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please record a unanimous vote.
Unanimously, it is the 10th day of April 2019, Board of Commissioners Springfield Township by Jeffrey T. Orson.
That's it? Take one, shoot one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Had a whole time here. Words are...
What? You still have 11 and 1/2 minutes of your allotted time?
If anybody liked to speak on Ed's behalf. Right?
Good guy.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you again. It's been a privilege. In all the years, you know, it's like 21 years or 22 years now, and you've always been great. So, thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for calling now this evening.
Ruth actually has a snow dance. And Jack, it was good seeing you.
First time in New York, it looks great.
No way, really?
Nicole, really?
Well...
Director Siriani's the heat miser, so...
Okay, well, thank you, everybody. You can go off your wine? We'll give you a moment.
You're not gonna stay for the whole meeting?
No. Thanks, Jim.
Thanks for coming over.
See you, Steve.
Glad to see you, Jimmy. Thank you.
We delayed the public comment for fear of some kind of backlash at giving Eddie the award there. So at this point, the Board is open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment, you may comment now. Do we have any comment at this point? Going once? Going twice? Okay, we will move into the business section of the meeting. I will start out as the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Library Committees. And I have, the second item on the agenda is the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the March check reconciliation in the amount of $336,701.01 in the April bill listing in the amount of $477,539.07. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next item is the announcement on the Verizon Cable TV franchise agreement. Springfield Township and other communities of the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities has been working together with the Cohen Law Group of Pittsburgh to create framework for a franchise renewal with Verizon for cable TV services. As with the recently completed franchise renewal agreement with Comcast, there is a requirement to secure public comment on the past performance of Verizon in providing cable TV services. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to be held on May 8th, 2019, at 7:30 in the Springfield Township Building. That's our next business meeting. In order to receive public comment on the past performance of Verizon with regard to their cable TV franchise agreement with Springfield Township. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Are we gonna provide a summary? I know you gave me a summary on the website, or we'll read the summary at the meeting? Or where is it all?
This hearing is just a receipt.
I know that.
Okay.
I know that, but people are gonna wanna... In theory, what Don's saying is, this isn't to talk about, should we ratify the agreement? It's part of the process of getting to ratifying the agreement is, people have to be able to come and comment on past service. So it's sort of independent, but it's required. But it's helpful to let them know.
What's coming?
It's also, you can comment all you want, there's nothing we can do either. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So that will be next month. And that concludes my report, and we will move on to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion tonight. This concerns the Tracer GIS program. And I will confess, I have no idea what Tracer means, stands for, but it's a wonderful program. We had a presentation the other night, sort of elevate our data collecting abilities into the 21st century, and I'll tell you a little more about it. During the March workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Board received a presentation on the Tracer GIS program, which had been previously reviewed by staff and recommended for possible purchase. In addition to GIS mapping of a variety of municipal infrastructure improvement...
I skip them.
...the program also provides background data collection that can be linked directly to the mapping. The program provides various modules, including but not limited to asset inventory, permits, work orders, fleet maintenance, and citizen central, which provides the public access to the township data. The system is cloud-based, so no additional hardware is necessary to be purchased. There is a one-time setup fee of between $10,000 and $15,000, which includes staff training, data migration, and integration from existing township electronic files in a township-preferred format. The annual cost for the six base modules is $21,600. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize a purchase of the Tracer GIS program from McMahon and Associates for the cost of $21,600 annually, plus a one-time setup fee of between $10,000 and $15,000. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
That tells you how cool this is. This will really help in a lot of the things the township does, outside of the police, who already are part of a different system, to have everything down to like the drains and the fire hydrants, to the work and process at different people's houses, all on the same system. It's pretty neat. You could even have added something that tracked where all the vehicles were one time, but that wouldn't bother putting things that were too expensive on every truck, and we're not spending money for the sake of spending money, but this should help things run better. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my presentation for this evening.
Okay, let's move on to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of a 1999 International chassis via the municipal electronic auction service. The truck was initially utilized as a refuse truck for the first 10 years of service, then converted to a winter maintenance truck for the second 10 years of service. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? We've gotten our money's worth out of this. It's 20 years old. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We will now move to Commissioner Wilson, who will both give the report as Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, and in the absence of Commissioner Graham, as the representative of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the recycling report, I'm pleased to announce that during the month of March, Springfield Township residents recycled 161.9 tons of materials with a householder participation rate of 83.7%. The net cost for the month was regrettably $20,355.39. That concludes my recycling report. And speaking on behalf of Commissioner Graham, I have to... I'm pleased to announce that Springfield Township recently received a community development block grant valued at $172,500 to renovate a portion of the gymnasium building at the township's rec center, 1200 Willow Grove Avenue, to bring the building into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The scope of work includes modifications to the existing entrance ramp, installation of new parking lot striping and signage, and extensive renovation to the interior restrooms. The architectural services are required in order to design the specific improvements. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners engage BAU architecture of Elkins Park, Pennsylvania, for a price not to exceed $18,400, to perform the scope of work in accordance with their proposal dated April 1, 2019. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. Mr. President, in Commissioner Graham's absence, I would like to highlight the event that he brought forward to us on Monday night, which is a very, very special event for him, certainly. Whereas the Department of Transportation, PennDOT, has agreed to rename the on-ramp, the south facing or access point on 309 at Papernill Road, in honor of his father, who was a very prominent Philadelphia black clergy leader and civil rights leader in the '60s and '70s. And they are having, to kick this off, they are having a cleanup of the ramp, that's the southbound on-ramp at Papernill Road to 309 on May 4th, from 9 to 11. And encourage any of the citizens who would be interested in showing up and helping with the cleanup. That would be, I'm sure Commissioner Graham and his family would appreciate that. And PennDOT, as always, graciously provides very attractive protective gear and gloves, hats, bags, et cetera, so all you need to do is bring yourself. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. That recognition is done under the state's adopted highway program. Take a stretch of land and you promise to keep it litter-free, and it was a great idea. He's very excited that his parents are on there, and got an army of friends and acolytes of his parents that are excited to clean it up. And the police will be helping because there's an on-ramp. It's the on-ramp, and I think it's the stretch of Papernill Road, too.
Papernill Road, yeah.
But for the on-ramp, the police are gonna help and actually, I think, briefly block it off, so they can do a nice job. So it seems like a win-win for everybody. So, moving along, we move to the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items this evening. The first one is in regards to traffic signal at Bethland Pike and Gordon Road. At the request of the township, PennDOT reviewed the conditions at the intersection of Bethland Pike at Gordon Road for the possible installation of a traffic signal at this location. In late 2018, PennDOT reported that their preliminary review indicated that the PennDOT traffic signal warrants may be met for a traffic signal at this location, but that the township should next engage the services of a traffic engineer to perform a PennDOT warrant traffic study. The Board of Commissioners discussed the matter at both the February and March meetings, as well as conducted a neighborhood meeting on April 4th, 2019, to receive public comment on the proposal. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners engage the services of McMahon and Associates traffic engineers to perform the Phase 1 traffic signal warrant analysis and Phase 2 analysis results meeting for $6,100 and $800 respectively, pursuant to their proposal dated February 1st, 2019. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mr. President. I think the Board knows by now that I am not a strong proponent of this action. I think it's money that will not be well-spent. I have never believed that a traffic light is warranted at this intersection, and after listening to the residents, primarily of Gordon Road, last week, I think the vast majority of those individuals also thought it was a terrible idea. So, I would like to make a motion that we table this resolution until we can get some additional clarity on what our true responsibilities are regarding PennDOT and the withdrawal of our initial request, letter request, vis a vis the traffic light.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Do we have a second of the motion to table? Oh, second. Okay. Now, we have questions and comments? Let me just make a procedural comment, or actually, it's not procedural. What's going on here is, the process with PennDOT is, they will not evaluate an intersection unless you pass a resolution saying, well, if we say yes, you have to build the light, because they don't want to just be free consultants to us. And in this case, we made that motion. I don't think we really thought they were gonna say yes, and they gave us a tentative yes. So, at this point, our options are, we can't just say, no, we don't want the light. We have to, if we want to get out of it, which I'm not convinced we do, but if we want to get out of it, we would still have to have a traffic engineer explain why a light is not warranted there. We don't have to do that right away necessarily, and Peter's not asking to do anything that's illegal, he's just asking to delay so we can learn more about this. This study, which is, what's the amount on that? $7,000?
$6,900.
Yeah, roughly. Almost.
This study will let us move forward in whatever direction we're gonna move forward, which maybe not at all. It will let us learn more about it. It will happen more quickly this way. So, what Peter's offering is truly tabling it, it's just delaying it, it's not killing it, because we don't have the legal authority to kill it at this point. So that's the context on it. So if we vote yes on this thing, that just means we push it back a couple months, we could have a slightly different crafted engineering study where we have the... Right now, we have an engineering study as open-ended, saying, look at it, let us know whether you think the light's warranted, let us know what the implications are on the side streets, let us know what you think the impact on safety is, let us know what you think the cost is, because these lights are really expensive and we'd have to pay for them. We'd be getting all that information. If we delayed it and went out to bid again, we could have a more narrow definition if our goal was in fact to not have the light at that point, but we can't just decide not to have it. So that's what we're voting on right now, is whether to delay it or not. Any other questions or comments? Peter, did I get that right?
Yes, yes, I think you did.
Yep, okay.
And a quick question, maybe for our solicitor. Is there any gray area? I mean, is there a sense that we might be able to claw back that initial request to PennDOT?
I don't know, unless we try. I mean...
So that's what this interim period could...
I mean, yeah, the regulations say you're supposed to proceed in this fashion. We haven't tried the informal one.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So this is the motion to table. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So that was...
I don't know.
Did you say...
Nay.
And you said nay? So it's three all, which means it does not carry. Although I will say, as a point of order, if the next motion fails, it will have the same effect as if you won this motion. Correct?
I would think so, yes.
Are you hearing that? Everybody hearing what I'm saying? Because we only have... Well, we'll see if that happens. So now we have a motion on the floor, and we will vote on that. All in favor, so this is the motion to award the contract. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So what's happened was, we had the same 3-3 vote, and that motion does not carry, which means...
Oh, I said no.
Oh, did you flip? Oh, darn, I thought we had this great backdoor thing. So the motion carried and it's awarded. If Baird had voted no, and it was 3-3, it would have been the effect of the first one win.
Just to clarify, you know, I'm not against it. With Pete, I'd like to know a little more about it, and I'm a little confused, but I gotta say, I still think it's not a bad idea to ultimately have this, you know, have the study done, so...
Yeah, and I don't know whether I support the light or not. We'll see what the study says. So, okay, so that was...
Do you want voter opposed, besides Peter?
Jonathan and Peter voted nay.
Oh, yeah, no, I voted for it.
Right. Jonathan and...
Yes.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay, too bad we didn't have that Boy Scout here, he would have actually learned something tonight. And then...
He is here. He is here. He is sitting behind...
Oh, I can't see your screen. Good, did you follow that? If that last vote had gone 3-3, we have to have a majority to pass, so they both would have failed, and they would have been able to actually kill it with only three votes, which doesn't make sense, but it would have worked.
In a tie vote, it means...
Because a tie vote means nothing happened. But the second one was a 4-2 vote. So Mike, you're still have the floor.
Yes, thank you. My next item is Resolution Number 1471, Arbor Day. Arbor Day in Springfield Township will be celebrated on Saturday, April 27th. On that date, beginning at 9:00 a.m., the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission will plant a tree within one of the landscape islands adjacent to the Public Works Department facility, and will give away 30 small container trees at no cost to the first 30 pre-registered attendees for the celebration. A presentation about the spot at Landerfly will also be made by a representative from the Penn State Cooperative Extension. Also in conjunction with Arbor Day, the Shade Tree Commission will partner with this free library of Springfield Township to conduct a Storytime program on Monday, April 22nd, at 4:30 p.m. in the Township Library. The participants will receive a small tree seedling that can be transplanted in their yards once they return home. More information on the Arbor Day celebration will be posted on the website on Friday, April 12th, 2019. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1474, a resolution proclaiming Saturday, April 27th, 2019, as Arbor Day in Springfield Township. The Board urges all citizens to join with the Township Shade Tree Commission to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to plant new trees and protect existing trees and woodlands. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? It's a great event, come on out if you can. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My last issue regards handicap parking. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 17-35, Schedule 12, special purpose parking zones to repeal the on-street handicap parking space on the south side of Grove Avenue from a point 120 feet east of its intersection with Schnell Avenue extending 22 feet easterly thereof. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And what's the background on that, Don?
The person passed away.
That's what I thought. The handicap resident passed away, because we weren't... We were briefed on that last month, was it? Or it wasn't in the book this time, was it?
No, what happened is, the daughter contacted us and really would like to see this.
Okay. Yeah, I guess you don't want to look at it. Plus, it takes away a parking space. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Finally, we move to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm pleased to announce that the next zoning hearing board will be held next. It will meet on Monday, April 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. in this town, in our township building. There will be a public hearing will be held in which the following petitions will be heard. One, Stephanie Ibrahim Mossad of 515 Ramsey Road in Orland, PA, are seeking variances from Section 114-64B to reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 9.33 feet, and reduce the aggregate yard setback from 25 feet to 23.2 feet in order to build a one-story addition to their home in the B Residence District. Stanley Herenco of Rittenhouse Lumber on 608 Bethland Pike in Erdenheim, PA, is requesting a special exception per Section 114-101J to allow this business to provide rental trucks on the property as an accessory use. This property is located in the Business 2 District. And Rosa Marino of 22 Rec Ave... And Rosa Marino of 22 Rec Ave in Orland is petitioning for a reduction in required minimum lot area per family from 5,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet for a two-family dwelling. This relief would make it possible to subdivide the property at 1661 Walnut Ave into two 5,000-square-foot lots. Lot number one would contain the existing two-family dwelling, and lot number two is proposed to be developed with a new single-family dwelling. The subject property is located in the C Resident District, and all interested persons are encouraged to appear and be heard. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. That concludes our committee reports, and we are once again open for public comment. Do we have any? Come on down and state your name and address, please.
Ward 72. I had the pleasure to attend the School District Board of Directors meeting on April 2. You know, we have that quite enormous building going on there on Montgomery Avenue. Our children are our most paramount to safety here. I plainly asked them if they were going to do the school zone. They were doing this, mm, 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 no idea about it. I know this Board has, sounds like, made contact with them a couple of months ago when this issue came by hand.
Don't we have it in the plan?
We have it on the plan that if the School District was interested in a school zone, that they would pay for all the expenses.
Okay, but there's nothing shown stone.
There's nothing that requires them to do that.
They would initiate the process?
Sure, yes.
Wow, yeah, because it seems like that they, they're just gonna go ahead and, it seems like right now, they're up in there doing it, you know? They certainly didn't know what's going on. It just really, really is a shame that if we don't have one down there, we're gonna be once again forced, the Township, to go ahead and make the request to do a school zone. That's what happened out here on 309 with the middle school, you know? Besides from that, I would really have to applaud this Board for really making sure that the Sunshine Act is followed upon. You know, whenever I come up here, guys, and comment, there's no silencing of my speech. Whenever I go there to comment over by the Board Directors Meeting and the high school, there's silencing of my speech, they shoot down residents, they know I hear our comments, especially about safety concerns such as big as less. So it's amazing of how you can have two different governmental agencies in the same Township, and they both act differently. I found that quite astonishing. Besides from that, that would my conclusion of my comments on agenda items. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You know, we've seen a lot of you lately, and you've learned a lot, and we've learned a lot through you, and we enjoy the dialogues, and they're not just here, you know, you, we're trying to all come out with the best outcome, so we appreciate your interest, and there's nothing wrong with a well-involved and educated citizenry. Do we have any other, speaking of that, do we have any other public comment? There being...
Mr. President, I have a comment. We had a discussion about the revised locations of the polling places.
Yes.
Would this be inappropriate?
Sure.
To discuss that, or...
Well, we can announce what's... We don't make the decision, but we can announce the process. There are five polling places that have been held in the School District, which the School District doesn't want them anymore, because they're, the way security's set up and they're disruptive. So we had to find a home for them. Two of them, which are the two Ward 7 ones, which were in the middle school, is that right? Those are the people that are Commissioner Graham's district, will be in this room, which is actually in, that is Ward 7. And then the other three, which are the two Ward 4 ones, those are your two and one of Mike's. Which, were those three in the high school, the other ones?
Yes.
Yep. Those three will be at the Flower Town Country Club. And we thank Brian Halligan for being agreeable to that, because he loses some revenue on those days, because the two days of the year, he can't use, can't rat it out, because it's being used as polls. I also will point out, and we'll probably send out a blast on this, that starting with the primary, which is just about six weeks away, the, all of Montgomery County will now be using new ballots, and it's a written ballot that then goes into a scanner, which has the advantage of providing a paper backup to all the polling, because we've never had that before, and it put us at a little bit of a risk for hacking. None of the things were ever wired up, so it would be hard to hack them, but it could be done through a software update. And now we will have that, and we'll have backups, we'll be able to have recounts. But we'll all have to be a little flexible, because we have to learn a new way to do it. What she'll do is, you'll fill out the ballot, and then there's a scanner that you'll put it in. The scanner reads it and will actually interface with you and warn you if you overvoted or undervoted. And if you're satisfied, particularly if you chose to undervote, you would then hit accept, and then it, then it takes the ballot and drops it into a lockbox, and then you're done. And that's also how absentee ballots will be counted that way now, instead of by hand like they were before. So that, stay tuned. There's a series of events that the county commissioners have been having where you can come, learn about it. I know there's one coming up, there was one last night in Upper Marion. There's one coming up at Arcadia in the beginning of May. I'm not sure which night, it's like a Tuesday, or, but we'll put out a blast on that, I think.
Once we get to him.
Yeah, once we, I've got it. And that's just a nice way to get in there, and we should all just be a little flexible in the, we should all vote in the primary, and we should be flexible, as everybody and the poll workers are learning what works and where their kinks. That's all I have. Any other comments from here or there? Okay, I will be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.